Cindy, we'll turn it over to you.
Sounds good. Okay. So when we met last for your board's self-evaluation, there were a few, well, one discussion in particular that you all wanted to have. And that was around community engagement to listen for vision and values. I have given to you a document that we can go through that kind of outlines what the phases of that process could look like, given where you currently are at in the goals and guardrails process. You have a set of goals and guardrails, goals that are not set to sunset until 2026. And so I think best to just pull this out and go through it. And you all can, we can go phase by phase. And you're welcome to have discussion among yourselves or ask any questions as we go through this. So first, and I didn't put this, when I, the timeline, I didn't put it from a date certain to a date certain. I basically outlined about how long I thought each phase of the process might take. First being process development. And that would involve developing an engagement and outreach plan. And what I've noted there is that at this particular stage, it's often, boards often choose to make that more of a grass tops effort, that it would involve a few buckets of things. First, to educate the community on what the role of the board is, what the role of the superintendent is, what we mean by vision and values, and how those are prioritized to determine goals and guardrails, especially in an environment of limited resources. To update the community, and that would be to report out regarding where we've been, where we are, where we're going. The last couple pages of this document, actually, I put together some sample content outlining from the very beginning, when goals and guardrails, when goals were first adopted way back in 2019, all the way up to current time, just to give some context there. And then you would listen, and that, the purpose being to represent the vision of the community. I've suggested here that with it be first with the intent of developing or revising that long-term vision statement. What it is that the community wants to be true for students 20 years from now? What should a graduate of DMPS look like? What should they be able to know and do? And then to gain informed input and insight as to whether or not the collective vision of the community as described in the goals, has it changed? Or is there anything missing? And then the same, to gain informed input and insight, do the current guardrails continue to sufficiently prioritize and represent the collective values of the community? And I've noted some considerations that the board needs, that I believe would be wise for the board to think about. First is the entry plan of your incoming superintendent. Any listening and engagement that he does is distinct from your owner listening. And it would be your job to help the community differentiate between the two. Also, to note that this is not a simple question to the community of, do you like the goals? But it's the board doing its job of representing the collective vision. And then using that alongside the student performance data to ensure that the prioritization occurs within the current reality for students. So again, it's looking at what the high-leverage, high-need areas are. Has that changed? And then, does that signal that where it's applied, where that special focus is applied, will it move the needle and require adult behavior change? And make gains toward all students being successful, toward that long-term vision? And then finally, just to, in the consideration is that, considerations is that the hiring of your new superintendent was predicated on the achievement of the current goals and guardrails as the board's communicated expectations. And throughout that, for that phase, it would be, once the board has considered all of those things, it would be development of the list of folks you want to engage with, organizations and such. The script and set of questions that have an owner-focused mindset. And then an optional survey, as well as any context documents that would spark community conversation. So that's what I look at as sort of that first decision-making phase around that. And I think that could be done in a month, so long as the board were diligent about completing assignments, homework, getting those lists together and put together.
Cindy, what is E and O, engagement and outreach?
Engagement and outreach.
Okay.
Yeah, I got lazy about typing. Yep, yep.
I am curious about the, in the items of what to consider. When you're talking about the high-leverage, high-need areas and looking at the data, how does that work? Does that happen in conjunction with the engagement and outreach sessions? Does that happen afterwards, after the data is compiled from those sessions? Or?
And that, we'll get to that.
Okay.
That's a good question, though, because that actually happens in the workshopping phase, where the board would take that community feedback and juxtapose it with the student data, just to see where everything currently lands.
Cindy, I think, I'm a little confused about the recommendation to do a more representative, grass-tops approach, because it feels like we're limiting feedback. And so I just, just when I think about the superintendent search as an example, I would say that we kind of did an all-call. And so how, maybe speak to this a little bit, this grass-tops approach, and why you're recommending that.
So I think, and I think that'll be a decision that you all can make. And if you want to do a full-on, all-call-type community engagement and outreach, then that would be a decision for the board to make. It would probably take longer. Again, that would be something you'd have to determine. But that is, it's just a matter that boards, there are a lot of boards who choose to do it that way. Get a representative group, do focus groups, bring community leaders in, what have you, just to check, do a temperature check.
How is it done in 2019?
In 2019, it was, it was full engagement. That was the first time we had ever done anything.
Grassroots.
Like that, grassroots.
Kind of a, got it.
Yep, the all-call.
I would, one concern that I have, not that it's a concern, but the observation that I have from the all-call approach was that we got a very limited view of who was participating. It was not representative of our district as a whole. So I think if we did, we could do, you know, a combination. But I think really targeting some of the underrepresented communities is going to be important.
Yeah, I feel like I'm hoping that we're just using the words "grass-tops" when really, maybe you're thinking like just focus groups? Because I think what's really important that we want to get at is like prospective parents, current parents. I mean, I feel like that's a really important voice, and that, to me, is not necessarily grass-tops.
Yeah, and that might be for your more, so I think when I'm talking about that, yes, focus groups or for the face-to-face is what I was talking about with that approach. I think I, yeah, in the face-to-face sessions. And the more extensive might be through survey and other. But this is all for what the board would need to determine. I hope we just keep talking about this, because if this is, we haven't gone to the community in four years. And so to me, it feels like if you're going in the community every three years is the historical precedent, then we are truly doing an all-call. And at the same time, I actually thought our superintendent search sessions, we did get feedback from a diversity of viewpoints. I mean, I remember the sessions that we were at. And so I want to be careful. I think we figured out how to turn people out. So I hope we really consider putting a lot of energy into hearing feedback from our whole community.
So I just want to ask the question then, when we're talking about getting feedback from our community, which I understand that piece, but we've already got goals that you've already said don't sunset until 2026. So are we talking about having a conversation where we're going to change all of that? Because that would be a concern for me. So I just want to know.
Let's keep moving through the document, I think. Let's just go from, to the very end, and then maybe, then maybe come back. I'm thinking that might be the wiser thing, because some of your questions might be answered as we go. So thank you for being flexible. And then just as I, as I continue going through this document, I will support whatever the board decides. And just want to be, so as you keep discussing this, then the phase two, it might take one to three months, give or take, depending on the extent of your list and how you determine you go, you're going to engage. And the key deliverables from that would be the community feedback synopsis that I would help you all put together from whatever it is that you gather, whether it be face-to-face sessions, surveys, from whomever you decide to gather that input from. The third phase would be that workshopping phase. And this is, this is where things start, start to, where more decisions would need to be made. So workshopping, it would take one to two days with the governing team.
Yeah.
Potential deliverables, a revised vision statement, perhaps revised beliefs and mission statements, if you deemed it necessary. Review of current goals and guardrails, along with the feedback synopsis and student data. And then potential discussion of theory of action and board guardrails for the board. And then the consideration there is that if additional goals and/or different guardrails are considered for adoption, the board should allow ample time for implementation planning, and part of that being a full cycle of budgeting. That adding goals to the current and for which resources are currently committed would require review and likely revision of all goal targets as resources available remain the same. So in other words, pie is the same size, slices just get smaller. And the timeline for this whole process would grow by at least one, if not up to three months, as the superintendent and staff would need to develop interim goals and interim guardrails. And there would need to be further discussion, potential refinement and revision until the board would be ready to adopt those. So if that, depending on what you all learn, wasn't sure what to exactly put on a timeline, it could be anything from, yep, a couple days to months.
Can I, just in layman's terms, what I think you just said is, we go into the community, and then there's some discussion that additional goals or different guardrails would be needed. Then they would likely take the year to work through a workshop and take effect concurrent with the next budget.
Yeah, so that, so that there would be time to budget for them, budget and plan strategy to.
Allocate resources.
Yeah, so that resources could be allocated, yep, yep. And then phase four is reporting back to the community. That, again, would be dependent on what comes out of phase three and what type of additional feedback the board would want and/or how much time you would want to leave things open for feedback. You would communicate what you heard from the community, how it was used, and what you were looking at doing with that information. Phase five is adopting, and that would be to adopt those, that vision statement and anything else. I just put "other" as determined, not knowing what might come of it. And finally, this is where you would plan for continuous engagement, so that it isn't three months, three years or plus between going out for the community. It would, it would be a continuous process, where you're giving quarterly updates about where you are, you know? And it's a continuous, continuous process. Yeah.
So would that be just the educate piece and the update piece during those interns?
Yeah, you're kind of always, you're always listening for vision and values. It doesn't mean that you're coming back to do anything with them, but you might be keeping note of those things as, you know, as time goes on. What you might also choose to do is, one quarter you're engaging over here, one quarter over here, you know? So that within an amount of time, you've hit various segments of the city. So that, there's multiple ways to do that. So you're, you're spreading, spreading the word and hearing from the various segments. And then that's, that's what I've outlined thus far. So I guess I'll.
I have a question for Matt. And it's the Goal Action Plan, Goal Action Framework.
Yes.
Document. That would come, how does that fit into all of this? I remember we had this conversation around vision, mission. Do you think about that Goal Action Framework as more of a process and strategy? Or maybe speak a little bit of how that fits into this?
Well, I think you capture it really, really well in terms of it being both process and strategy. And so the inception of that, going back to June, when we worked on that, we discussed the goal development and the interim goal development specifically around the strategies that we were going to deploy and actually support financially moving forward. So from the inception of those, if I'm answering your question correctly, or with the intent of what you're asking it, is it's both. It is absolutely driven by the strategy, but the process of getting to that requires that we bring in, you know, financial implications and all of the other aspects of the organization that are going to contribute to this goal development being a DMPS goal and not a department goal. Is that helpful?
It is. And so I think if we were to, if there were consensus to move forward, you would have to revise, if goals changed or guardrails changed, more, if goals changed, you would have to revise the Goal Action Framework.
A hundred percent. Well, at least analyze whether or not we would need to change them. But I would offer maybe to add to that is, even the goals as written, we discuss, are the interims the right predictive measures? And so there's still potential that, in deliberating with Dr. Roberts, about whether or not these, all the interim goals are the right interms in terms of it serving as a predictive value for us meeting our actual goals and guardrails.
And I just have to share an analogy that I heard recently about this, because it is a continuous improvement process. So as those interim goals have been developed, you've put something on paper, and it's like that first pancake. That first pancake doesn't always turn out right, usually doesn't. And it's the pancake that goes to the dog or in the trash. So you just keep, keep making pancakes, and they keep getting better. You keep putting that on there. And I add that to try to make you all hungry for pancakes, because that's what it did to me. Pancakes for dinner.
And analogies also sticks, because it's, it definitely speaks to the iterative process that the development of the goals and guardrails drives with the team.
Yeah.
It's a constant conversation of, are these metrics in their formative state? Are they, what are they telling us about our inputs? What are they telling us about our outputs? And what do we need to do differently or more of or less than moving forward?
And I think it's also important to note, not only in that respect, that you're constantly having that conversation, but it's a constant cascading from the boardroom to the classroom and making sure that there's alignment all the way through the system to actually get momentum. There's that whole flywheel and doom loop aspect. You know, it takes time to get the flywheel moving. And when we keep changing course, that can sometimes inspire more of a doom loop than waiting. It's good to great. It's in your resources, in the back of your SOFG manual. It's all in there, so.
Can I ask a question? Is there a time, when you talked about changing interims, that you feel like our interim goal anticipated that there was going to be a successful end metric that wasn't met? Is that kind of what you're thinking about? That sometimes you see indicators in our interim goals monitoring that predict that we're going to have a successful?
Correct. And it may not be whether or not we met or didn't meet the actual metric that was designed. It could mean that the actual predictive value of that metric is not as predictive as we anticipated or as we expected based on research.
And so you, how do you know that the interim? Do you know, I'm trying to say, how do you know that an interim is an actual predictor? Like, if, have you seen one be successful and the end not? Or have you seen a predictor be successful?
Yeah, we don't know yet. So we'll have some of that information coming in the next couple of board meetings. But an example of more of a transactional sort of, or maybe an operational interim is maybe two board reports ago around the small sample size. Now recognizing that that small sample size didn't allow us to make formative systemic decisions based on that analysis, we know that we need to come back and make some shifts or changes to that particular sample size. That's more of the example that I'm thinking of right now, of where we might need to make some changes.
So I guess to clarify, maybe the interims, I guess where I'm trying to go, is the interims maybe just aren't enough to bring you any idea of if they are good or not predictors? Not that they're not predicting anything.
Correct, yes.
Because we don't know, because we haven't seen it actually not come out, you know? To an end where there's been, you thought it was going to be great, and it turned out terrible, or you thought it was going to be terrible, and it turned out great. It's just you haven't found a predictor that you feel confident in?
Well, and we're confident, but some of that data is still rolling in to know whether or not, if we met that metric, did it have the predictive value of us actually meeting our goal? Because, for example, we may, let's say, if we don't meet some of our interim goal metrics, but we meet the goal, we definitely need to go back and revisit whether or not those are the right interim goals.
So you've had that happen?
We're, that's happening.
Okay.
Live, actually.
That's, thank you.
Yes.
I really appreciate the portion of the workshop where we are considering revising the vision statement, beliefs and mission statements. I think that's something that's overdue. And certainly, our timeout in the community is also overdue. So I don't know if there's straw poles being taken, but I appreciate all of the considerations that are here. And I think we have more discussion, but look forward to this plan.
And I'll piggyback on that and just say that I think that, I totally hear you about timing. Took us a long time to get those guardrails down. So I think we all know that it can take time, but it's a good time to do it. I think now's the time to start putting the wheels in motion.
I have a question as it relates to the comment about the incoming superintendent and differentiating. And so a typical, there is typical, incoming superintendent comes in. And just by virtue of where they sit, parents are talking about their hopes and dreams of their expectations, what they want their kids to know and be able to do. And so there's a part of me that says, if we're doing that, a superintendent can listen to that. But is it, what I worry about is if Dr. Roberts were to do a series of listening sessions, and we were to do a series of listening sessions, we got a lot, a lot of listening. And so I'm just wondering how to think through that, and if anybody has any insight on that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't know that I have any insight, but the note that I wrote down when we were walking through this document is, number one, timing is everything. And number two, we don't want to oversurvey. So I think we have to be really careful about the timing of one or the other or both, and how we align those in a way that allows us to differentiate between the two, but also capture in some instances, which may be the same information, but through a bit different lens. Because I think how we approach this is going to be different than how the superintendent approaches it, because they're going to be looking for things that are more specific to how they operationalize things. We're going to be looking for things that are specific to how we govern and how we do our work. So I do think that we're going to have to be really careful, not only about providing clarity to the community about either or both processes, but then I also think that we also have to remind people the lens through which the information is being sought. So those would be my general thoughts. Yep. But I do like the idea, because you know what? I think that Connie Bosin and Jenny Strong and some of my previous colleagues were on the board when we actually did the vision statement and the belief and mission statements. And that's been a long time ago, y'all. So I think that if there's an opportunity for us to start at a place where there isn't a need to draw that distinction, that might be helpful. But I think it also allows us to really update the community on what's happening with the current goals and guardrails. Because, you know, our assumption is that the community is watching our meetings and looking at our monitoring reports, which I would love that to be the case, but I don't believe it is. So being able, being able, well, yeah, you Blake.
The four of you.
The example.
The four of you.
But I do think that there's some opportunity here for us to be just really thoughtful about where we engage in this conversation and how we engage in the conversation, so.
Can I ask a question about our, I know this is a sample about what we'll be sharing, about sort of what we've been doing since 2019? Do we, this is a kind of a lot of just like our goals and how we got there. Are we going to be sharing any like results or updates?
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't do a whole lot. I had outlined kind of the history as I knew it. And then in the, where we are, that's where I have the pink insert state of the goals, interim goals, guardrails, interim guardrails, what the current reality is, what the budget alignment has been, what the work is ahead that's already been planned. And then probably some sort of student data context document, a very readable, digestible type of thing. And I'm not suggesting that this be what it is that you use. It's just some content that, that's there. I think too, when, as you're talking about the vision statement, having a vision statement that is, that the community, that you can put together from community input, I think would help people understand what the, what it is long-term, like that you're wanting students to know and be able to do as they graduate from Des Moines schools. And then to help them to understand that the goals, those things that you've prioritized right now, those three things are just those very next steps in ensuring that that ultimate goal is needed. You know, those three-to-five-year bites that you're taking with focus to actually ensure that something happens. Kelly, are you still there?
I am, I'm just listening, thank you.
Sorry, Kelly. Is there anything that you had a question about or wanted to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
So I have a couple of thoughts, because I think this is really important work that I think at some level and in some way, we're going to need to execute on. Whether or not we just focus initially, you know, on vision and beliefs and update on what's happening with goals and guardrails, or whether or not we get a bit more intentional and open it up. And that's really not for me to decide, that's for us to decide. But I would also suggest that we've got about 30 to 45 days' worth of heavy lifting as we prepare to transition the new superintendent. So what I'd like for us to do is to spend the balance of May and June doing the things that we committed to during the search process, to ensure that we have a level of readiness for our new superintendent, and we're prepared for that transition. And as soon as that's over, we pick this up as a priority of the board to determine next steps. I don't want to cross those things, because they're both so important, that if we don't spend the time required to do it and do it well, we're going to miss something. So I'm going to ask if there's consensus for us to commit to getting through the process that we identified we needed to get through as we prepare for the superintendent transition, and then at the end of that, we begin to engage in next steps around the vision and values. That will give an opportunity for both interim Superintendent Smith and Dr. Roberts to really begin to start thinking about that as well. So how does that sound? How does that feel? It's just a recommendation, but it feels like I don't want to overburden us and not get anything done well.
So in August, what month are you thinking?
Yeah, I would think that we potentially could be ready to maybe move into this, you know, mid-July, early August, which gives us time to sort of get the other ducks in a row before we, in earnest, move forward with this.
I'm really glad we're having this conversation. It's really important, and there's a lot of passion around it, I know, from all of us with different perspectives. So thank you for having it.
Cindy, how does that sound, just in terms of sort of segmenting our work and segmenting our priorities?
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense to me as well. Okay, that works.
So it'd be like a work.
Yeah, we would probably calendar a work session just as a continuation of tonight, and maybe give interim Superintendent Smith and Dr. Roberts an opportunity to maybe put their heads together as well around how best to position this so it's successful, even at the staff level as well, so. Okay. So Rosie, just remind me that we're going to calendar something in July. Do we have?
You put that on our timeline.
One or two, one or two meetings in July?
One meeting.
So it's early July?
Do we have a monitoring report already?
Okay.
In July?
We'll work, we'll talk about that in agenda planning, so that we can sort of get ourselves organized.
Which I need to reschedule.
Yeah.
Reschedule. I'm sorry.
Perfect. Maria, do you have any additional comments on this?
I'll agenda planning tomorrow. Okay.
I'm just looking at phase six, and I just, I just have to say that I really like the idea of doing this just ongoing. It just gives me a feeling of, I don't know, I feel like transparency has been a concern historically, and I feel like this really makes it look like intentional, like we're really trying to just be more transparent. So it's really, it's good.
Jackie, anything else? Juana? Jenna?
No, thanks, Cindy, for putting this together. Appreciate it.
Kim, anything else?
Not at this time.
Kelly, any closing comments you'd like to share?
Nope, looks good.
Sounds good. Matt, anything?
No, thank you for the time.
Okay, great. So we'll coordinate.
Yep.
And figure out where to from here, but we won't get to it, at a minimum, until July.
Yep.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks, everyone. I think we're concluded.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Cindy.
All right. Bye, all.